Welcome to the Mound City Council Meeting for Tuesday, January 23rd, seven o'clock. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
Would you like to add to six P M. meeting time discussion?
Yeah. Uh, in between seven and eight?
That sounds like a good.
Okay, seven and a half, alright. Okay, any other amendments? Okay, alright, so we got our agenda with that amendment. Does someone want to make a motion to approve that?
I make a.
Sorry, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of seven point five um discussion on changing of council meeting time.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, alright, that passes. Alright, we got the consent agenda pretty short. Today, we got approved payment of claims, approved the minutes from the January ninth meeting, and the pay equity report. Does anybody want to talk about any of those? No? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, yeah, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember McEnany?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye. Alright, that all passes, thank you.
Alright, number five, we got comments and suggestions from anyone present that's not on the agenda. Limit three minutes per speaker.
Hi Liz.
You give us your name and address.
Yes, I'm Liz Van Damme, fifty-eight sixteen Grandview Boulevard here in Mound. So, just following up with our last meeting, when I was here a few weeks ago, about the public dock proposal on Dutch Lake, per suggestion, I did direct questions to Mr. Borg and received a very polite explanation. Basically, the city agreed to be a partner with the D N R. There was a longer information, but that was the takeaway. So, as this has been considered a good idea, before the dock goes in the water, the Dutch Lake taxpayers that you represent deserve to know your plan for the management of this new public space. If management will result in increased property taxes, and where will people park, because the boat ramp parking has been labeled fake. It's not okay not to have these answers. I know nothing illegal has happened, I've heard that, but courtesy goes a long way to assuage the differences of opinions that we are having. The former city planner, I know he's not here, but he did not receive any pushback on his false statements. If the Dutch Lake parking area, he is on record labeling as pseudo, is fake, then where will the cars park to use the dock? Where's your study of the parking lot capacity? Regarding traffic, Mr. Borg, in his note to me, made a personal judgment that he does not expect a large volume of traffic increasing on the roads for the pier. He doesn't live on Grandview Boulevard, he doesn't witness its use daily as a speedway bypass, and he can't even make an educated guess about traffic volumes. Can those of us on Dutch Lake shoreline expect our property taxes to increase to support the dock management? This is an added public platform for the city of Mound to maintain security on the housekeeping. We don't want Dutch Lake to look like Lost Lake, the waters in front of the dock spaces, accumulated trash welcoming boaters to Mound. Will Dutch Lake be on cleanup schedule? And if so, can you please add Lost Lake to that schedule? This project is more than essentially a paper exercise, as the former city planner stated, and this free dock is not really free, because now the city of Mound is responsible for it. I grew up in a town not much bigger than Mound. One of my brothers was the chief of police for a lot of years. Living beside the boat landing here on Dutch Lake, we do witness everything that goes on and will end up being the ones calling the police, when the pier is used for fireworks, when expanded parking becomes the easement property, and when garbage accumulates around the shoreline. We aren't looking forward to that and being labeled the complainers. We moved to Mound because we wanted the small-town atmosphere, as a lot of people do, in hopes that even if it's not broadcasted, we'd be living among neighbors that treat others as they want to be treated. Our little of the corner of the world can't solve all these big problems going on, but we can try to maintain courtesy, recognize that facts do matter, and call out untrue statements. In the case of this project, I feel like courtesy was ignored, facts don't matter, and untruths went unchecked. I want to believe that we are better than this. I know I keep referencing the old city planner, and I know that he's moved on. From this council space, on record, he sat here and he didn't share the truth. That's especially unsettling, because I learned, he's an Air Force Academy grad. I know it may not have anything to do with the dock, but we have two brothers that are grads, and our oldest son is a grad at the Air Force Academy, and our youngest is a West Point grad. In our family, the service academies are revered, and the oath each cadet takes on their indoctrination date is also revered. They all raise their right hand, they're, most of them eighteen years old, maybe seventeen, they raise their right hand and they take a solemn lifetime oath not to lie, cheat, or steal, or tolerate anyone that does. And the whole time that they're in school, they can be immediately expelled if they break that oath, immediately, gone. Okay, that doesn't happen that often anywhere else in our world. Jesse, I want to thank you for the very courteous call. I do hope in the future that you'll be okay pushing back when people say things that aren't true, and to take the time to fully vet a neighborhood project and its potential impact.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Liz.
Alright, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I think we should make a correction, and, what's your name?
Liz.
Liz, Liz, I just want to make a correction to your statement. You kept referring to the city planner that was our city manager.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just spoke.
So, just so that we have, correct, that's all.
I'm sorry, city manager. Sorry about that.
Because we don't have a city planner.
Well.
We don't.
It's a different person.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, I just spoke.
Alright, any other, anyone want to come up?
Is this something Mr. Dixon will respond to in terms of, will be taking care of the property?
Yeah, we can, you heard the, I got a list if you don't.
Yeah, I was thinking, no, it's two.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it. We did, you and the attorney talked about kind of how we got here in the first place, right? And I guess we all got a memo, and then we asked him to reach out to you, and he did call you, right?
I would, yeah, I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, so, yeah, again, we're, we're hearing you. We're, not saying we're going to agree with the answer, but I'm just saying we are hearing you, so, and we'll have him reach out again, so.
Can I just?
Real fast, what's up?
Can I ask just one thing?
You gotta come back up here, but.
Okay. I know this is probably going to sound really ridiculous, but I'm going to ask you anyway. Do you allow volunteers to come and clean up Lost Lake? I mean, is there some kind of liability that I can't get in my waiters and clean up the crap that's in the front of that area there?
I think anyone can do that on their own if they choose, I mean.
So I won't get arrested if I'm down there in my waiters and?
A few would get arrested, but.
So maybe I need to come and tell somebody something, say something?
I guess people can go in the.
No, I mean, if you go down to Surfside and pick up trash, I mean, you can if you want.
I'd be in the water.
We actually gave a.
It's horrid.
We gave us.
Sure. In our parks, in our parks program, people can volunteer to adopt a park, and so Lost Lake is on the.
Is Lost Lake considered a public park? I thought it's part of the city park.
Andrew Sisters Trail is there, so.
Once you're talking about the water, it's different, but if you're talking about the land part.
Now, I'm talking about the water in front of the piers, in front of the dock areas, it's just pretty awful. And it's not, I have the time, and it doesn't bother me getting waiters.
Well, I don't know, we can, I don't think there's any rules against it. I don't know, isn't that more of a D N R?
You can do it, I do it in our comments area all the time, yeah.
The city's jurisdiction stops at the high water level, and so that would be a D N R question.
So we, again, we can have Jesse on your behalf reach out and see if you can put some waiters on if you want to.
Yeah.
We have, we have a dredging policy, so that might be similar to what you're asking? Just the, you know, kind of weeds and that kind of stuff in there, or are you talking more like literally trash?
It's literally trash.
Okay, alright.
And where does, is that Mound responsibility, or is that the D N R?
Well, once it goes in the lake, again, it's not, that's, I mean, technically, it's not us anymore, even though they could throw it from us to them.
But does that apply to Dutch Lake then?
I mean, technically, in the water, yeah.
So you aren't responsible for keeping it clean, then, when the pier goes out, right? When all the crap goes on the water, you're not, Dutch, the D N R is now responsible for cleaning it, it sounds like.
Again, we, we can push on people a little bit and say, you know, hey, don't do this, or, you know, put signs up and that kind of thing. We can have the cops come by, but technically, it's, right, D N R issue.
Yeah, jurisdictional control for the city is high water level up towards land, and then ordinary high water level towards the water is D N R. Now, I don't know enough about Dutch, you know, Dutch Lake and the makeup, but that's generally how it is.
As far as cleaning, I mean, I can speak to like other areas too, and with like the Harrison Bay Association, like you can pick up garbage whenever you want, you can't like rip up cat tails and lew pads, and you can't, you know, get a garbage bag of like weeds or like, you can just pick up trash. You can do that whenever you want.
Well, that's what the Dutch Lake neighbors do. We keep the shoreline clean.
And there's a gentleman that actually I usher with at my church, that we gave in a kind of citizen award two years ago. Literally, he's retired, and all he does is walks around Surfside and downtown, and he'll pick up trash, I mean, he'll just fill up trash.
Isn't that guy with the really long, long beard, kind of like a hobo with his little dog? Yep.
He's a, yeah, he's a great guy.
He's a great guy. I'm sure he is.
Remember, it is.
He has a character.
It is public waters, so you have, you know, the, meaning the public has a right to be within the water, so if you're there picking up trash, I'm going to assume the D N R is not going to have a problem with it. In the same way, the city wouldn't have a problem if you're going through a park and decide, oh, I'm going to pick up, you know, if you see a can, you can pick it up and throw it away, so.
Okay.
And there's other people that go through Surfside looking for cans, too. Sure, well, we've all seen them, but.
Okay.
Making money on recycling.
Because you see me, in waiters, in Lost Lake, in that little section.
Alright, appreciate it.
Will Hahn can give you a thumbs up. Oh, yeah, please do, please for attention.
Alright, moving on, we're going to go West Tonka Student Senate Presentation. Come on up, thanks for coming out again. What's your name?
My name's Emma Carlson.
Okay, welcome.
Alright, so I'm a junior at Mount Westonka High School. This is my third year in Student Senate, I believe. This year, I'm assuming the role of the treasurer for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, so that's why I'm here today. So, our agenda, we're going to be talking about activities, athletics, arts, and academics, and so let's get right into it. At Mount Westonka, we offer a handful of activities and clubs that everyone can get involved if they want to be. I'm going to be giving updates from a handful of those clubs. Starting with Student Senate, we hosted the Weekend Drive. This took place December sixth through thirteenth. The primary and middle school also hosted these, but at the high school, a total of two hundred forty-three items and five hundred and one dollars was donated, which is amazing. And as kind of an incentive for people to donate, Student Senate organized like a hot cocoa cart. This took place December twenty-second, and we awarded this to the winning grade. This ended up being the sophomore class, the class of twenty twenty-six, and so they were given this hot cocoa cart the day before winter break, which was very exciting for them. Next, we're working on planning prom right now. The juniors who are in Student Senate are in charge of planning this. The date will be Saturday, May twelfth, May fourth, twenty twenty-four. We're still figuring out, like, we know our location, we're still kind of finalizing our theme, so more details will come out about that later. And we are also planning the Snowball Dance. This will take place February third from eight thirty to ten P M. Tickets are going to be five dollars pre-sale and ten dollars at the door. For pre-sale, we'll be selling them at lunches on the campus Wednesday through Friday. This dance is open to grades nine through twelve, so it's pretty like all-inclusive, and then the theme for this year is Winter Wonderland, which is very exciting. Moving on to another club, Rotary is hosting a Stick It to Hunger event. This will take place at Shirley Hills. It is a four V four, four V four hockey tournament, and the entry fee for this is a food donation, so that we're giving them to the Westonka Food Shelf. Next, DECA competed in the district's competition. This took place January seventh at Bloomington Jefferson High School. A record of a hundred and sixty-nine students made it to the state conference. This will be taking place March tenth through the twelfth at the Hyatt Regency in Minneapolis. Currently, students are preparing and finalizing their finished projects right now. Overall activities update, Westonka Beach has started their season, and they competed at the first tournament of the season. They had a ton of placements in the top eight for both varsity and novice, which is very exciting for them. And also Math League had their third meet on December eighteenth, which seems like a while ago, but they got first in their division, and they're currently second in their section. Now, I mentioned DECA a little bit earlier, and I was at the meeting in, or I was at some meeting in November, so if I look like a familiar face, that is why. I am part of the Eli Hart Foundation DECA Chapter Projects. I am in this with three other girls. It is myself, Olivia Adam, Samantha Crawl, and Gabriella Larson, and we work with the foundation itself, so Tiffany, Ben, and Jen, who I'm sure you all are very familiar with. But the reason I'm talking about this today is because last Sunday, we hosted a Winter Wonderland fundraiser, and this was from one to three. Parents could drop off their kids and then go run errands, have a little time for themselves. The cost was, I believe, twenty-five dollars for one child, so it ended up being a great fundraiser for us. It was an afternoon full of fun activities like skating, sledding, arts and crafts, a hot cocoa cart, and pizza. Moving on to athletics, I said that we have a ton of activities that we offer. We also offer a ton of sports, so let me give you a couple winter sports updates. For starters, girls' basketball has a game Thursday at home against Delano. Boys' basketball travels to Delano on Thursday. Girls' hockey, their current record is fifteen, or fourteen, five, and one, and they have a game tonight at Hutchinson. And then boys' hockey, they have an away game tonight against Southwest Christian, so good luck to all these teams. Next, dance team, the Junior Hockey Kids is being put on February second and third. They hosted the conference championships last Saturday, where they were named both conference champs in cake and jazz, congrats to them. Nordic skiing, they competed on January ninth. The girls placed seventh, and the boys placed ninth. Alpine skiers, they are traveling to Buck Hill tomorrow, which is exciting for them. And then wrestling, they hosted their senior night on January twelfth, said goodbye to a handful of seniors. And the gymnastics team is preparing for their state meet. They only have a couple meets left before that. Now, let's move on to arts. So, Mount Westonka High School Theater is competing in the one-act play. This year, it is, or the story is Kodachrome. It tells the story of a small town where everybody knows each other, similar to Mound, and the pace of life allows the pursuit of love to take up as much space as it needs. There's a total cast of eighteen students, and these students are grades ten through twelve. There will be a free public performance tomorrow at the PAC at six thirty, so mark your calendars if you want to be there. And they will be competing at subsections at Chaska High School on January twenty-seventh at four-ten. They're currently prepping for their school, or their spring musical, which is Footloose. Auditions and callbacks were last week, and then next week rehearsals start, which is exciting for them. And then the Mount Westonka High School Choir, they all hosted their holiday concert on December eleventh. This featured music from the Cannibal, Bel Canto, concert choir, and Mad Jazz. It was a very like inclusive concert, and along with that band, they hosted their winter concert December third at seven in the PAC. And they, the middle school band had their concert on December fourth, and their next concert will be an all-district concert on March third. Finally, I'm going to talk about academics. Recently, seniors Cassie Nemeczek and Cormac Schaefer were named triple A award recipients. The triple A award is for students who have excelled in the arts program, and the athletics program, and the academics program. These two students, I know them, and they're very hardworking, so I don't think the award should have gone to anyone else. That is all that I have for you guys today, and thank you for listening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, number seven, we're going Earn Sick and Safe Time policy.
Alright, Mayor Holt and Council, I'll be reviewing this topic tonight. So, effective January first, twenty twenty-four, Minnesota's Earn Sick and Safe Time law required employees to provide this benefit, this new benefit to employees who work in Minnesota. This was passed in twenty, early, earliest twenty twenty-three by the state legislature. And so I'll review a little bit why we're delayed a little bit. It's, again, was effective January first, but there's been some, ever since this was passed, there's been some ongoing discussion about its implementation, and in my, in my memo, I stated that a lot of those questions were kind of going back and forth with the state for interpretation, and they finally put out an updated memo on questions on December fourth. Some cities have already passed their policies, but we have been working with our labor attorney on drafting our policy and kind of waiting things out a little bit, because it's possible that there will be some amendments that will have to take place at a later date. But we, we have been implementing it. We did pass it administratively, but we, again, recognize that we want to be transparent with the council, and that this also, this is also affects the city manager, who is an employee of the council, and so, again, just increasing transparency and any changes in the organization as well as for policymaking. So essentially, if you haven't heard of it yet, it's Earn Safe and Sick Leave, and it can be used for a variety of reasons. I won't go through all of those, but it's, it's a lot of, similar to sick or P T O, where you can take time off to take care of family, if you have a healthcare emergency, and other, again, other items and reasons listed in your packet. So, how this affected full-time employees, it really hasn't. So what we've done is we've cross-designated in our, in our policy that it'll work with our sick time, and so employees do not accrue more sick time or leave, it's just cross-designated within that category. And we just have to track it for administrative purposes if we get audited. So the state needs to make sure that we are tracking it, and so, again, we, we chose to cross-designate that. That's one of the options we could, could do. For part-time, this affects our liquor store employees only, and then when we, when we do bring on seasonal, it will impact them as well. It takes place whenever an employee works eighty hours, and then we have to retroactively account for those hour, like, whenever thirty hours are worked, then we do give them an hour of E S S T. So this is really impacting more of the tracking for our liquor store. And that's where we would see a little bit more of a budget change. And then, in our policy as well, we do cover currently our paid-on call firefighters. This has been, again, we've had many conversations with our labor attorney, it's been ongoing. This is where our holdup has been, because the interpretation has just been very difficult for a lot of fire departments in a lot of cities. And so, again, we feel like we're in compliance, and that we will administratively be consistent in applying this law, but keeping in mind that, according to our labor attorney, this is going to go back to a lot of the fire chiefs association. They're going to bring it back to, or have, open a discussion with the legislature in February, and they're going to recommend that they become exempt. I don't know if that's going to happen, but it is kind of, again, that struggle of interpretation, and a lot of cities are struggling to find the appropriate way to administer this. So, I just wanted to say that. I don't know if it'll happen. Regardless, we are administratively keeping track of it for our fire department, and then, again, if, if something does happen, we'll come back and we'll make an amendment, but at this time, we're, we are fully in compliance, or the policy in front of you has been reviewed by our labor attorney, and so with that, we are recommending approval of this policy. Again, meets all the requirements that we're at right now, and then we will provide an update at a later date if anything changes.
If we approve it, and there's amendments that are coming through, is that going to affect anything?
If there are any amendments, we will bring that back, and we will amend the policy. At this time, with the ongoing discussion that we had with the labor attorney, we've chosen to bring it for approval, with the understanding that things could change, but keeping in mind that we are administering it as if it went into effect January first. But yes, it will come back to you, because there's a lot of moving pieces right now.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you for explaining that.
So, we don't vote, you just tell them us, or?
Um, a motion to approve the policy would, would be, again, since it, it has been approved administratively, but in our interpretation, since the city manager is an employee of the city, making sure it is applicable to all, or the policy has been applied to all employees. Yep, so we're, we're asking yes for you to approve it tonight.
Okay.
I mean, as I read through it, we, we don't really have a choice.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
We don't have other rules from like.
It's a mandate of the state.
Right, it's a mandate.
Yeah, it's, the choice of the matter came into how we apply it. There were three options, and so the policy is just spelling out how we've chosen to administrate it. Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, so if someone needs to make a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve Earn Sick and Safe Time E S S T policy.
Alright, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, alright, that passes. Alright, number seven point five, six P M. meeting discussion. So we talked about this in our workshop the other day, not last Tuesday. We're looking, I think we're all in agreement that six is kind of where we want to be. Tell me if I'm wrong.
I like that all the city meetings are at seven, but I'm not opposed to moving it until six, like, just as long as we, like, make sure we over-communicate it. Like, what's the timeline of having to give notice? Is it just for the first couple, and then it's like we can just start having them at six?
So, in my understanding, this, if we all agree that we want to do that, we would make a motion to the staff to look into it.
Oh, okay.
And he, he would work with you, and then you have to do like a.
There's a couple of things, I mean, yeah, there's a, there's a couple of, right now, your meetings are set forth on your, your regular meetings set forth on your calendar that was approved. It would, what we'd be looking at is, looking at amending that calendar. And then there's also, under city code, it talks about the day and time for meetings, and so we have to take a look at modifying the city code, too, but, and there's also some logistics part of it with regards to the implementation of it, and so if the direction comes from the city council to move forward with this, then we'll, we'll put the pieces of the puzzle together and bring it back to the council.
I think it was favorable for staff, too, right? I mean, to have the meeting at six instead of seven.
Yes, generally, we're all hanging around anyway, waiting for the meeting at seven, so if we started earlier, that would be a plus, but I mean, we're here to serve you, so.
I mean, I don't feel one way super strongly or the other, so whatever. How does it work for your schedule?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Um, I'm always available, so.
Lighten up, yeah.
Well, no, 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 I mean, I, I, I mean, I, the, I, if you, if you tell me six, you tell me eight, five, I mean, I'll, I'll be here. So, I mean, that's not an issue. My Tuesday nights are always, those Tuesday nights are always set aside for, for Mound, and I don't have, there, there's no other. And I don't have, there, there's no other meetings that I would have at, you know, at that, even before that.
Great, okay. I think if we move it, we can still have, like, I like having, if we have an extra workshop, if we can, to have it on like the same night as a council meeting the hour before.
They have five then.
And then we'd have it at five, which, you know, I get, that makes it tight for anybody, but as often as that's going to happen, I don't know if it's a huge, you know? Because I kind of like doing the five to six as a workshop and then six for the meeting.
Yeah, I like that a lot, if everybody's available. You don't have to be here.
For the workshop?
Not like a policy.
No, 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 I, I, I think the idea is that I'm available, I'm here for the, for the regular business meetings and upon request for any other meeting.
Because it makes it better for workshops if we wanted, you know, him to be there as well. And then it's like not a policy thing, but just kind of like a best practice that if we have a workshop, it's going to be the hour before the meeting unless like, you know, we can't get a quorum or something.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Everybody. Okay with that then? All right, so let's do a motion to staff to do that then.
I'll make a motion that we direct the staff to pursue looking at changing our calendar to starting our meetings at six o'clock and potentially then workshops. Do we need to put them there too? As well being five to six on those designated days.
Okay, is that good?
Yeah, I do have a question just logistically. Are we, are, are, do you want to make the work sessions or workshops just a regular thing before each meeting? Or is that something you're going to maybe notice as a special meeting?
We would notice it as a special meeting. I think we're going to have a high lack of a lot of them here in the next few months.
Okay.
So, but I don't want to like every, you know, we're always doing that hour and then it's like we have nothing to talk about. I don't want us need to meet.
Because you can always, yeah, I guess.
Cancel them, I guess.
Yeah, but I guess the, I guess the idea is when we're working on this, if we're going to modify the calendar, if you want to have work sessions in, in there, you can, but then it's, it's a regular process. If not, then it's just going to be the three-day notice requirement, which either way, it's fine.
So could we just put them in there and then just say, but then we have the right to cancel them or something?
Yeah, you can, you can do that too. Same way, the same way you can, you can put something in a calendar and cancel a regular business meeting too, if you can, you know, if like it happens to fall on the twenty-fourth or something in December.
Okay, well, then I guess, I guess I'd be open to just throwing them in there and knowing that, or maybe one, you know, the first meeting of every month or whatever. And the other one, we keep open maybe?
Yeah, and you can cancel, work sessions could be canceled. So I, I, I always look at it that, that what you do is that if you have, say, if your meeting is coming up and if you know you're going to cancel that work session, just make a motion to cancel it at the open meeting.
Okay, and that's all you have to do?
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then, then it's, then it can be canceled. I mean, that's one way of doing it.
But do you set the notice and the three-day and all that? If you do it all?
To, to cancel? No, no, because it's, it's, the issue is, the thing is, you're not holding a meeting.
Right. So it's. If you are, then you got to announce it if we hadn't already done it for the whole year.
Right.
Okay, okay, well.
I, I will say, I'll work with, Jesse and I worked together to put together some, something that falls in line with what you're talking about. And then, I mean, maybe it's an option, providing two optional calendars or something, but we'll, we'll come up, we'll, we'll put something together so that it follows the council direction.
So do we want to just say every meeting is a potential workshop and then cancel the ones we don't use? Or do we want to do the first?
We don't do that now.
Well, I'm just asking so they don't waste their time on stuff that we don't, you know, to do. Or do you just want to notice, notice workshops?
Yeah.
Notice workshops.
Just know, don't, okay, all right, well, then forget it.
Okay, I was, you know, this is why I ask questions.
Yeah, well, we don't want to waste your time. We don't want to waste your time.
And I don't want to waste your time.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so just, you heard, so workshop, we're just going to do the three-day notice as we need them. And then the regular meetings, we're going to change to six once all this gets done. How long do you think this will take?
Oh, we can, I, I, I believe we could, I mean, we could bring it back. Well, here's the thing, I anticipate we can bring them back to the next meeting, but there's some logistical parts of it too that I talked to Jesse about that we just need to make sure works. It may, maybe it's a matter of bringing it back and then when is it implemented? But I, I'll talk to Jesse about that. Maybe the plan would be, do you want to bring it, yeah, do you want, do you want to try to bring it back next meeting or what do you want to do?
I don't think bringing it back is going to be all that difficult.
No.
It'll just be the timing of when we want to implement it. I think it's, the lead time's going to probably have to be at least a few meetings, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think so because I, there's some, we, we, I know that there's some notices out there that tie into seven o'clock. For instance, there's a, I'm working with Kevin on some liquor violations that we sent notice out saying there's a seven o'clock meeting. That's the kind of thing.
So you got to make sure that those aren't overlooked.
Right.
Okay, so maybe March or hopefully March or April.
Yeah, I, it will, I, it'll be brought back either sooner and then with an implementation will happen.
Implement, March, April, yeah. Okay, bring it back next, hopefully next meeting, if not the one after.
I don't think it's around.
No, I don't think it's going to be, that develops as a matter, here's your calendar and here's the ordinance change.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, that passes. Okay, number eight, city council goals and priorities. So y'all, y'all got that, the notes that I took from the meeting, right? So I guess as I go through there, I mean, some of these are just kind of F Y I kind of stuff, you know, like the water, like obviously we're working on it, but then as we get to like one D where it says like, you know, Melissa Reed, Park Street Public, you know, a lot of these, like that'd be kind of more of an action item. So do we want to kind of go through these and say, you know, these are action item things and these are kind of just more high level? Or should we do that?
Short list of notes, I mean, do we just want to each go through really quick or like how do you want to do that?
So I guess as I look at like the next page, like, so like three C, when we're talking about the newsletter, like add four X a page, you know, we already did, we just did that, good content, blah, you know, so that's, I think that's kind of like check, check the box, that's done, as long as we keep doing that through this year. When I look at, you know, Harbor Park getting new bids, obviously that's an ongoing action that like, that we want to make sure we stay on top of. But that's more of a city, you know, that they're going to be doing. Public Works Director, right? We got to talk about, you know, having a meeting about that or workshop. Again, code enforcement, the citizen of the year, right? So like, and some of this stuff maybe we'll bring to a workshop and say, you know, here's two or three things, let's talk about for an hour before our next meeting. And then give instructions to staff, this is what we're kind of thinking, big picture, can you bring something back to the meeting? So again, I just look at this as kind of, I know we just talked about all this, but like for an example, the, the citizen of the year, like maybe at the next workshop, you know, in a, in a workshop session before the meeting, we say, you know, this is kind of how I imagine this and then send it to them to actually bring something back with, this is how we're going to implement.
So where are we at like for like, you know, the agenda item for tonight? Are we just wanting to talk about these and like say that we're okay with the list? Or do we want to talk about the items or just like that's another workshop?
I, I think we're just kind of recapping what we're talking about because we kind of hit that to our mark. And I think some other people might have other things that we didn't quite get to. I kind of talked too much that night, but so I, I don't know, I guess I'm open to what you guys want to do, but.
I just had a couple of things that, I mean, to mention and only really one thing that was urgent just because spring is coming.
Yeah.
But as, so going down like starting at the top of the list, so two, under two budget, two A, five, two A V. Like I think not levying the sewer fund, I mean, I think I added that at the thing, but I think that's part of the L T F P. So like the goal is if we follow L R's L T F P, that in five years, the levy would not, the sewer fund would not be on the levy. So I don't think it's a twenty twenty-four item. I think it's going to happen as part of the plan. So I don't know if we want to like take it off the list just for the sake of taking it off the list.
Just the A.
Two, five, two A five, because that should happen with their plan. It was in what we looked at, you know, they were like, if you follow this and you should be able to not levy that fund in five years.
Okay, so just delete that?
Yeah, I don't want it to look like something that we didn't do in twenty twenty-four because that wasn't the intention.
Everybody go with that? Okay, so I'm deleting that. And then like, again, do we just want to start at the top and just go down real fast?
Yeah, I only have like two more.
Okay, go ahead.
Four C.
Yeah.
And not to, you know, spark a conversation about all this, but this could be something that we could give direction to staff to look into, but I talked to the Wazada Police Chief and his kind of best opinion was, you know, you can have a C S O or someone down there to like be dedicated to be there.
Right.
You know, so I don't know if we want to have, I think we should look into like how much that might cost.
We tried that.
Sorry?
We made that suggestion already.
But if it's that important, if we find out it's not, I, I think it is too, but I'm just saying if we find out it's like not feasible or we might be surprised that it is, we could use budget for that to make the park and the ramp more accessible.
I think what we talked about that we can't, I won't go backwards, but I think what we talked about, who is our community service officer? I'm so sorry, I forgot his name.
Andy?
Andy, we discussed, I don't want, not deputizing him, but we talked about giving him the authority down there to see if something is not right. Because I know the police department is stretched, but, and that was one thing I was hoping we could do if he's already on the payroll. To me, it shouldn't add any more cost, but.
Those rental companies, it's so much like Saturday, Sunday too though, you know, it's like, do we need to hire?
Police should be doing that, but no.
Can we contract someone else to do that? I don't know, I think it's worth looking into because.
I think we got to first.
It's not a difficult solution.
I think we first got to think, are we going to, you know, follow the C U P? Like you have a C U P, you can do it and the rest you can't, you don't, you can't. Now, the other thing is, again, this will be where we bring you in to it, is can we even say, you know, can we do that legally, right? Or are we just opening a problem?
So my next question was D, like, I'm sure that this has already been done with the few businesses we know that do that, but like have, have we already made direct contact with them with a letter from the attorney?
Every app.
If you.
Over and over and over and over, over and over and over.
How do we enforce that? Then we should, so I want to be able to enforce that, like then we should have someone at the ramp.
We've been trying to have that done.
You know, Saturday from like nine to four or something.
One of those workshop deals that we need to, this like be a whole workshop.
Yeah, but like before we get to having the workshop again, we should have some direction for them to like see if that's even a solution or not, or else we're coming to the workshop with nothing.
Well, my, my biggest issue is these companies that don't have to come to mound to have any kind of responsibility to mound. You know, once they do that, and that would be up to our attorney to see if there's any way if they're traveling the streets of mound, running, profiting off the city mound without having to get any kind of a permit or.
Yeah, I mean, I like that four C and D are on there. I just like if we're going to have another workshop soon because it's going to be April pretty soon. It could be early ice out. It's like we want, I want to like, I don't know, be able to have some material for a workshop that's probably coming up pretty soon.
I've got loads of material to bring to workshop. We have loads of stuff.
Well, why don't you load him up?
He already knows a lot. He knows about it.
Well, then, great.
Yeah, I, I, I think that I, I don't want to provide legal opinions in an open forum like this. And so, you know, if there's individual, I mean, I know that we've been at meetings in the past and I provided some, some, some advice, which kind of the questions that just popped up probably would answer it. I mean, I, because I know that you two have been more involved with it than some of the other council members. So I don't know, I, I, I guess I need, I mean, it may be worthwhile to have a work session, we could sit down with, with me there so I can have a better idea of what it is that you're actually looking for. I can kind of, you know, and from there, from that work session, that may then provide, if they can't get the, you know, if we don't have the answers that I need or if there's new questions, I can provide some form of a memo or something that is right direction.
Well, that's a great idea because a lot of it just may be language change in, in our ordinances or adding, subtracting.
Well, I, I, I know the, I, you know, I've spent a summer here. I, I, you know, I, I know that, you know, the issues that, that both of you brought to me with regard to it. And we can, you know, it's a matter of working through some of, and some of the, the issues that are, are some of those questions or that I think are on the list that you, that you just brought up, we, we've talked about those already. So it may be worthwhile to, you know, to be able to be in a more informal setting to have that discussion and, and I'll prepare myself with, you know, what I've done so far. And then from there, that can help. If, and then if there's something more formal that we can put together, then we can do it. You and I had talked about, I think it's on the list, if there's a, some form of permitting system or something like that, but I, I can tell you that you can do it, but that's maybe more of a staff looking logistically if how other, how other, other cities do it and has it, what's, how, how does it, what's the end result? Does it get what you, is it going to get to you what you want too? I mean, I don't know.
A lot of that will be, you know, through your insight and if we can or can't do it.
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah, well, there's one question about whether you can or can't and then, you know, the devil's in the details of, of like, well, then how do you set it up? And then, you know, would be a good, and then have, how was, and I'm always a, I'm a fan of not having original thought in certain things. So what's like a, how would, how do other cities have it, can't be, this can't be that. I know Surfside Park is a unique park. It is, it's because it's location of a boat ramp versus to the public space. But it can't be boat or control of ramps can't be that unique. Now, we also have, there's other issues I wouldn't get into that overlay this too. So without trying to get into much detail at this point.
I have nothing else.
How, how much time would you need for, to be ready for the first workshop?
I'd probably be ready by next meetings. I have, I, we've, we've already, we've already gone through this. I know that, I know what the, what the basic issues are, and so I just need to pull up what I, what we talked about, what we did in the past. And so just it.
But, but part of that, from what we've talked about in the past, is possibly researching some new ideas that can solve our problem that couldn't in some of our past conversations.
There has to be a lot of other cities that deal with the same thing. I mean, we're not unique in that regard.
Maybe different states.
Different lake.
Jet skis.
Like up north.
Every, 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 anybody who has a public landing, they all deal with it. And the L M C deal be the first to say, once, once every city takes measures to try to get them to abide by something, they move to another landing, so.
It's fine.
Oh, yeah, we.
This one's our problem, you know, it's like.
Yes, we love that.
Okay, so let's put this on the next workshop. Can you be here at six then?
Yes.
Six o'clock.
Before then, before the meeting.
Before the next seven o'clock meeting because we haven't changed yet.
Okay.
You guys go with that?
Yeah.
You guys go with that?
What, sorry?
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
Will be our work, first workshop, February.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yeah, okay.
I will double check just, before I say yes, I should always look at my calendar.
Is that our next meeting, February thirteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to put it in the calendar now.
Okay, so that'll be our only discussion for that meeting. And well, we only have an hour, so we'll have to get to it.
Yeah, and, and I will say that I will look through it and, and, you know, you and I had already talked about some certain solutions. And so I, I, you know, this may be more of a bringing the whole council into a discussion of it. And then from the, except from there, that may help spur more conversation, at least the direction that we need to move forward on it.
All right, anybody else want to add things or talk about things or get rid of things on this list?
Well, actually Joanne, who's on the park board with me, is, she is interested in writing a grant to A A R P to support age-friendly types of activities in our new park. And that grant is due March sixth, so I would hope that we could at least present what we want to put in that grant and make sure that the council's in agreement with the proposal.
So on five H, I guess, I have it under Harbor Park, but.
Yeah.
I, I put age-friendly city. So we want to add just grants is due March sixth?
March sixth.
And then.
But, you know, I think we want to present it. But, you know, I think we want to present it.
Before then.
Yeah, I, I don't want us to submit it and then show it to the city after it's submitted, and then you guys say, oh, wait a minute, we don't really agree with that.
Okay, so you'll have her reach out to Jesse.
Yeah.
To start working on that, so we can, I guess technically, we'd have to have it by the last February meeting. So we'll say do by, what's our second February meeting?
Twenty-seventh.
Or it was moved to the twenty-eighth.
It's the twenty-eighth.
So is that enough time for you to approve it to get submitted by the sixth?
Well, I was thinking that we might at least present a draft proposal with name components.
Okay.
At, at the next meeting, which is what, February?
Okay, so you'll do the.
Thirteenth, yeah.
We'll do the draft on the thirteenth. Draft to council, okay. Anybody else want to add stuff? I guess I want to probably go through real fast and just, I think there's probably a couple of you either combine or delete on here. And then we can maybe just get a final copy uploaded to everybody or something. So I think on, on one, water funding, obviously is very important to us, we want to make sure, you know, we, we do all that. So A, B, C, D, E, I think those are good, right? Two, budget, again, we're trying to look for savings, watch our spending in 2024, look at 2025. Again, we already took out that one. I think everything's good there. Number three, website links, looks of the website, upgrade to a new version or a different vendor. I know Maggie's working on that as we speak, she had some meetings today with different vendors. Our current website, we cannot upgrade because there's a big backdoor thing happening right now for the whole year. But you potentially might find other vendors that could be an option, and you want to see some?
Yeah, so I am looking at three companies right now. And so, like Mayor Holt said, the, our current vendor is doing behind-the-scenes upgrades, and so no websites can be redone until 2025. But that doesn't mean we can't add in some features, like one thing I, so there are some options, but I, I do want to bring back to the communications committee just kind of timelines and potential vendors that we could work with if we feel that we need to get the website updated sooner.
Okay, perfect. All right, and then going down to, again, this is in our communication goal for the year. Facebook, we already got passed, but posting again, weekly, being creative about it, you know, effective. You're doing a good job from what I'm seeing. Instagram, I know that's next on your list, that you're already kind of thinking about it. And then, again, just our other, you know, fire department and liquor store, introducing our website kind of sharing. So I think these, I mean, these, this whole thing will be done pretty fast, I think. Again, down to newsletter, adding extra pages, Maggie's in the final draft of our newsletter that's gonna go out in February here. So really, I think that whole thing is kind of done, just make sure we, you know, we keep it a good newsletter people want to read and, you know, productive. Digital newsletter, again, that's a, I think, a different thing that might go with the website. While it says in concert with updated website, push to residents, get emails. So again, I think that will, you'll be working on options for that. And then meet the staff Wednesday, that was just what, post on Facebook? Or what was the point of that one?
Well, that was my thought, just to introduce.
On.
On Facebook and Instagram if we get going, which would be a great Instagram, you know, push.
So I'm gonna.
And I've, I've set up a bunch of layouts and templates to send over to you, so you can come up with, you know, your questions. And then, once you get those done, we can get them put together, and then you can put them out, I was thinking like once a week.
That'll be good, no, that'd be fun.
Yeah, I think it'd be fun too. I mean, I, I'd like to know more about our staff.
Yeah.
I think the, the whole city would benefit from understanding what a great staff we have.
So I'm gonna delete three E, and I'm gonna move it to three B five. Makes sense to me. I'll, I can send you all this updated thing, but I kind of had it in its own thing, but it should be in the Facebook column. All right, and then for Surfside Park, again, complete construction of the park, which will happen in the spring. It sounds like nobody really wants to do the dock section at Surfside, right?
No one wants to do it.
The docks section at Surfside?
I would say, I, I do after, I'm not gonna say if, but when there's a solution to, you know, clean up the ramp and make it more patrol, or like getting all that traffic out of the way, it's like.
Should we just kill it for now?
Yeah.
Kill it.
Okay, I'm gonna kill it.
Yeah, we don't want to try to do both at the same time.
Four B is off, if we have an amazing situation, then we can add a back one later. But I don't want to like have that as a goal for the year.
We don't need to give them another spot to tie up.
Okay, and then like we just said, four, so then now this will be B and C, which we'll talk about in our workshop the next meeting. Harbor Park, so that's five, Harbor Park, again, is our, one of our goals. That's the park right downtown by Artesa that we approved the concept last year.
And I'm wondering, under the contract we had for Harbor Park, the consultants, we had, have we spent all that money? Or is there still some, some work under that contract available?
That's a good question. We'll have to get back to you.
Yeah, because I mean, that might, they, they had a really good system for doing the codes and getting people to respond. And if we're gonna look at renaming the park, using those, you know, they, they put up the code things in our neighborhood parks.
Oh, sure.
So people could get the questionnaires and respond, and, you know, I think we need a, we need a tool for soliciting new names or consideration of names.
So A, and again, you guys are gonna start working on getting busy and kind of getting to the next part of the step that we're trying to do here.
Okay.
And then again, B, coordination to be finished by Artesa completion-ish, fall of 2024 would be, you know, at least the first big phase of it would be, our point, and I know I'm kind of talking to you because you weren't here. We don't want a big construction zone, and then a big construction zone again next year, and, you know, but, but like always in construction in this town. So you think that's feasible potentially, if we can fund it? Brian?
Hi, Brian.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brian Simmons, Bolton Mink, your consulting engineer. I think most of those questions will be answered when we come back with the study. How's that? We're like, we're looking at all of that for you.
Okay, good.
And it'll be packaged, so we can have an intelligent discussion about that, and you don't have to point at me in the audience.
Perfect, yeah, sorry. All right, and then funding, obviously is important, how are we gonna pay for this thing? Uh, D, renaming the park, like you just said, again, coming up with.
And we have the streets, so, the request to rename Auditor.
And Auditors, what is it called, Road?
It was Auditors Road.
Yeah.
What, what's that little one that they wanted to rename?
Marion. Marion.
Marion Place.
I don't think they wanted to rename Marion.
They wanted to rename Auditor.
Auditors.
Yeah, but we do have Marion to think about, and, and Old Shoreline, which is really gonna be pretty much a, a ut, you know, it's a parking, a parking lot.
Okay, well, all those, we'll talk about what we want to do there.
Yeah.
Again, adding to the Andrews Sisters Trail. Sorry, Andrews Sisters. Uh, twenty, twenty-five, again, crosswalk install, I know that's kind of technically next year, but we're just gonna stay on top of it to make sure that we stay on top of it for the following year. And then this one, again, we kind of worked up this idea, but with the trail, do we want to work on some signs? We've been talking about this for three years. And there is a sign on the Dakota, you know, trail, right? Hey, go this way for that, this, you know.
The, the Three Rivers has the map sign.
That's my point, yeah.
They have that, and then up on Commerce, the city has a smaller sign that, I think, does it name the businesses? Can't remember.
I don't think so.
But anyway, it's, it's a city sign there. But what we don't have is, we don't have anything that's, you know, kind of like list the restaurants in, in the community.
Right.
So people obviously see, they see the ice cream shop, they see Dakota Junction, they get a glimpse of, of the pizza place, Carboni's, and a little bit of maybe Domino's, because those are somewhat cited. But should we have a sign that says welcome to Mound? These are, you know, places you can eat. And, you know, does, is that something, it's, to me, that's part of the partnership part to the park. So we need to talk to the WCC, whatever their initials are.
WCC or?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Or the actual like trail, Three Rivers.
Three Rivers, because the right of way, the property is Three Rivers.
Right.
So we have to get permission to put a sign on theirs, or else we have to go to what's ours and put it on our, our property. But so, so there's, there's things that can be done for generating business, but there's also history. People, we actually have people in Mound who don't know that that big building was Tonka Toys.
Right.
And there's nothing in this town that, you know, we should have one like at Surfside, or that thing that has history. There should be something about the history of Tonka Toys.
I like your idea of having a big Tonka truck, you know, for photo ops.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I want to do with that one cutout place, is to have it. But, but actually, on the trail, there should be something that says to people, this is Tonka Toys. Just like where the, where the parking garage is, that used to be the depot. And we should talk about, there was a train depot here. I mean, people see when they go to Surfside, but to understand that the train did stop here, actually. And so some of those kinds of landmarks, and Polly, you might have some ideas about things too, that, you know, we should be lifting up. I always remember that our drugstore had, it had the old soda count, counter in it. You know, so you'd go in, sit up to the counter, you could get hamburgers and cokes and stuff.
My grandma was the manager.
Was she? Okay, yeah, see?
There you go. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, I think St. Bonnie has something like that, like they have a wayfinding sign on the trail that kind of has arrows that points to different things in their town, so.
Yeah, we should have it on like when you come into Mound.
So we need to go to St. Bonnie and check out their signs.
Yeah, it's cute, yeah.
So, again, I don't want to overload you guys, because that's not gonna be efficient. Is there something that we want to kind of put on a workshop and talk a little bit more about it? Or do we want to have, again, I want to give you like thirty things to do today, and then come back and go, gosh, you guys, what the heck? Like, I want to give you a couple of good things to work on.
Yeah, I think that this and, and actually, some of the other things we're gonna do, like with the planning commission, are things that can be part of our commissions, working with the staff, appropriate staff as well.
Yeah, I mean, all the stuff you talked about with like the signage and stuff could go to Parks and be on consent agenda for us.
So you guys, you guys want to work on it then, on the parks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense, right?
Can you remember that, to bring it on the next Parks meeting?
Yes, and then recall, we do have a joint planning mission, or meeting with the planning commission. So I guess if there was something, as you're going through the list, that is related to them, it could be an opportunity to just throw it onto that agenda or a discussion.
But the whole signage thing, I mean, that could even be, we don't know if we have to have a workshop on that. We can just, like Parks can do it, and, you know.
Well, I'm gonna write down here, so again, I have put up signs, local businesses, work on the design slash idea for a sign, potentially work with, you know, WCC, Three Rivers, wayfinding on trail, go look at St. Bonnie for ideas. Uh, and then I'm gonna say Park Commission, you guys are gonna work on that. So you'll come back to, you'll figure it out.
There's all different kinds of signage that, that exist.
Yeah, so you guys can vet it all out and come back with good ideas for us. Okay, you guys like that? Okay, all right. And then now going to number six, again, this is gonna be probably a workshop down the road here, Public's Work Director. You know, we have temporary for now. We've kind of talked about that, do we need, you know, full-time? Is there a different structure that we can work on? What we've decided in the workshop is we're, we're gonna talk about this in maybe a month or two, uh, once you kind of get your feet under you a little bit better.
Now, the, the concern I have with this is that I thought that we had decided that, one, first of all, our city manager, he, it's his staff, and he needs to come bring to us what, what he's looking at. And I think we have to be careful not to, as a council, start directing what this position should look like. Our, our responsibility is to hear from the manager as to how he sees the best comp, composition of staff to support, you know, the work agenda you want to put forward. And so don't let us get into driving and saying, well, you ought to do this kind of person, that kind of person, because we're already starting to do a little bit of it.
Well, I appreciate that. I will also add though, I mean, if there is a restructure, or, or if we're kind of rethinking how the city's going to be run from a public works standpoint, I still don't mind making that, however you see fit, if it's just a report or some sort of workshop. I mean, I don't know if that's skirting the line of micromanaging or not, but I, I do think that that's a, I mean, the public works is a very public-facing part of the city. I don't hate the idea of, of at least involving the council in, in how that restructure might happen, so. Maybe we have to just think about it, but I, I'm not going to be offended that if, you know, this is the first thing that we do after you hired me is a big shakeup of public works, and I, I prefer it didn't happen in a vacuum, so to speak. So, um, at this point anyway, I, I'm, I'm open to some sort of effort to kind of get that out in the open, and if it's a workshop or some sort of extended report, you know, by all means.
I kind of agree with Sherry, where, you know, we need to find, we can workshop what we want to do, but not micromanage it. But also, like, at, at the last workshop, you had mentioned a few other public works positions that I didn't even know. Like there's different roles, you know, like it's not just public works director, you know, maybe we need something else. But if it was like you and Ryan Preach and Bolton and Mink kind of all, like what's the best fit, what do we actually need? And then at the workshop, you came to us with that information, I think that would probably be the best, right?
And so, just for your information, and I, I can speak to this at the end of the meeting, but that's on our agenda right away. Ryan was pretty sick last couple of weeks, and with, we had a couple of water main breaks recently. So getting caught up, and then that's our agenda for the next week probably, is to really just tear into that, because I don't want it to drag out into when the ice thaws and the, you know, the parks are open, because that's gonna severely limit his time. So our plan is to really try to put some effort into this and figure out exactly what we need from a public works standpoint. And then be happy to bring it to the council, especially if there's big changes, I mean, because that could, that could affect the budget, it could affect other things that you do have a purview over, so certainly open to, you know, presenting that however you'd like to see it.
Yeah, it sounds like there's probably, you know, more than one way to do that.
I believe so.
Good, better, best.
Just for the public's interest on this, so again, we're, our old city manager was also our Public's Work Director. He retired, so now we are left without a Public's Work Director. So now we've hired Bolton and Mink to be our on-demand Public Work Director. And what we talked about last year was, in kind of heading into his retirement, was, do we need, remember, he was full-time public works, full-time city manager, do we need a full-time, we need a full-time city manager, no. But do we need a full-time Public Work Director? And I think that's a fair question for us to ask as policymaking officials. And we also did put that in the budget for this year. And I guess our point is, we just want to know what your opinion is coming into the, you know, to new role. I know you have a lot of background experience from your previous job. Do we need to workshop it? No, we just really want your opinion, you know, what do you really think? What do you really think we need, and what don't you think we need? Um, we're gonna probably go with what you think, but we also want to know why you think that, and, you know, costs and, you know, the whole work, so.
I, I, I'm not offended by it, I promise you, I'm, I'm very, um, I'm new here, remember?
We're trying to help you.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I mean, I, I really see it as collaborative effort with Ryan, as the, you know, he's filling in where he needs to, and so I, I, I don't want to come in and step on toes, and we talked about it at the workshop a little bit, but I, it's ongoing, but I, we're trying to really get, working on it here, um, and then happy to bring a report to the council.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave number six alone. Well, again, you'll, again, do we need one question mark, Jesse's opinion, you know, so you'll let us know your opinion. Number seven, with code enforcement, uh, keep updating code, keep working with attorney. With you, I'm gonna throw you on the spot.
Oh, good.
Um, is there, um, any other things that you're seeing within our code that should be updated or kind of gone through? Or is, do you think with that one step that we did, you know, we're actually, we're gonna keep, you know, enforcing and actually send a letter and actually follow up and?
Yeah, I mean, I'm part of the, uh, I, I've always said that the bane of existence for most cities is code enforcement. It's, it's not a unique situation for Mound.
Yep.
It's, and, um, there are tools that are involved, um, but it's a matter of, uh, in some respects, following through. I should say that I, I, I believe that, um, at the staff level, it's, there is a positive turn with regards to, you know, once you put people on notice that there's a code violation, then they'll fix it. The problem is just those problematic properties are out there, and then typically, Andy will do what he needs to do, and then if it gets, and then then there's a decision being made about whether we go down a prosecution, prosecution route or the silver route, and so, um, I, I've, I've, I would say that, um, it's a, it's a work in progress, and is all code provisions are, um, you don't know the problem until it actually arises, okay? But I would say that, uh, with regard to the, the tools that we have that are in the code right now, I don't see a reason to modify the code at this moment. If that was your, I think it was your question.
Well, what we did last year was we said we're, we're not just gonna send you a letter or two and then forget about it.
Right.
We're actually gonna keep.
Yeah, there, there's, there's a idea that if you, you know, being a paper tiger, if you continue to send out letters or give, you know, give somebody initially, take a yard type of attitude, and that if you don't follow, if you don't follow through with what you, with what's in front of you, it becomes, it, it becomes kind of a useless tool.
Right.
Um, and, and the other thing too is a lot, a lot of cities will move forward with code enforcement, cause it's, it's a, it's a matter of code integrity. Um, everybody else is subject to the same code provisions, so should these other properties.
So here's another question that we've talked about for the last three years, but not recently probably, but, um, we're complaint-based, really? I think a lot of cities are, right?
Yeah, every city that I'm, have is complaint-based.
How many is that?
Let's see, one, two, you got it, three.
Three.
Uh, four, five, six.
So all of them, alright.
Yeah, all of them.
Um.
And the other cities that are in our firm represent too are all complaint-based. So it's just, it's how cities operate.
Okay, so what do other cities do for, I'm driving down Blank Road, and everybody sees the same thing, but I don't feel comfortable saying anything to anybody, cause we're sitting up here. And that's awkward, but also because we're sitting up here, we're the ones that look at stuff the most and think about it all the time and go, gosh, maybe someone should call on that, but, you know, and again, I know I'm a resident too, I guess I could, you know, whatever, but it's, you know, I've kind of defer off on that. What do, what do?
I, I mean.
You can't just have everybody driving around all day and just have him, I mean.
No, I mean, it's a matter of, I mean, again, you guys are the policymakers, we don't want to make you into the enforcement officers. You know, um, you know, with regard to where your role is. But there are some cities where, you know, say we got a mayor and they drive around and they know it's a problem, they, you know, may contact administrator or manager and say, you know, what can we do about this? I mean, so, it's not like you have to sit there and wait for it, you know, to happen. If you, you know, if you, if there's a problematic property that people know about, um, it, it, it can, you know, it can be brought to the forefront. But I think that those discussions with regards to how that's gonna happen, the use of the, the resource, the staff resources, I think, you know, that would be a discussion with Jesse about, I think, about the logistics, about, you know, making that work too. But I guess if the answer is, you know, the question is, you know, can, as, as a council member, can you bring up, you know, here's an issue, you know, to, to staff? The answer is yes.
Yeah, and that's what I've been told, I just, I don't know if you guys feel the same way, but sometimes it's a little unsettling, cause just that we're up here, like we're big police, you know, policing everybody. At the same point, when I go door-to-door and talk to everybody in the community, they go, what the hell are you guys doing about this, this, and this? And then I feel timid to actually say, you know, to go, gosh, you guys, I mean, there, I've done it a few times, but I'm just saying. And those are really probably the most severe, and you know most of them. But, so you're saying, it's okay, just, you know, don't go down, you know, right on a hundred properties and?
Well, I, I, you know, it, it's a matter of, you know, kind of, maybe it's a matter of looking at the lowest hanging fruit, I mean, there's, I mean, you could, you know, if there is a problem at a property that is brought to your attention, you know, then, you know, maybe it's something that, well, okay, maybe we should look into it, and may, you know, and, and maybe that when, uh, and maybe as it's started to your attention, you bring it to staff, it's like, yeah, that's something we're looking into, and that's, you know, we, you just don't know at that point where, where the city is with it, either our staff is with it.
Okay, so. It's, it's normal for people like us to say something. At the same point, that doesn't mean we're all comfortable to do it. Um, and in a complaint base, like all your other cities, again, besides, like you said, the, you know, manager, you know, driving around or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, some of these cities, like you said, are bigger, they probably have more staff to be able to go, hey, you know.
Some are bigger, some are, you know, there's smaller ones too.
True.
And I, I will, I will tell you that, um, staffing for code enforcement, even in the, the, the big city that I have, is one person. So, so it, 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 it.
They do other jobs too, that's?
No, that's.
That's their job.
That's, that's their job, and, and they're understaffed with regards to it, because then, and that's, because it's, it's just, that's the way it is, and so similar to, um, and that's where I, 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 I bring up too, is that it's a, you know, the balancing act, and it's talking with, you know, Jesse, like you said, on other items too, is, you know, staffing level and to make sure it works out, cause now there's a discussion about, you know, okay, well, maybe Andy should be setting time at Surfside Park, but then that's gonna take him away from, you know, other things, possibly other things, I don't know. I mean, I'm not the staff, I don't staff, but, um, that's a discussion you would have with Jesse and the staff, in his staff level and, and those kind of things, but you know, the question I always came up with, you know, was coming up is, can you do it? Yes, um, you know, it's, you know, it's a discussion to have with, with, uh, you know, if something comes up, you see something, then you talk, you know, you talk to Jesse.
Then obviously with our, with Andy, um, I mean, as he is driving to different places to check on things or do his job, I mean, if he sees something on the way home and like, hey, come on, you know, this is a very blighted property, I mean, can he make a complaint, or is that not allowed? Cause he's.
Well, nothing is not allowed, it's just the, the policy, I think that's the policy of, I mean, the reason why you go complaint basis is that it's the tolerance level for neighbors, but it's a tolerance level too.
Right.
And so, there may be something going on that, I know it's, I mean, I'm trying to think of an example, um, because we allow boat trailers everywhere. But, but, um, say if, say if we did, didn't allow boat trailers in the front yard, um, it's a tolerance level too. If the neighbors are okay with it, then.
Move on.
You kind of move on, but if there's this other area where, you know, it bothers them for neighbors, um, for instance, maybe trailers are there and they're running a business out of it, you know? Um, then the tolerance level is different in, in, you know, in different neighborhoods, and that's why the complaint basis, I think, comes out is, it is, you know, it's sometimes, it may be a code violation, it may be technically a code violation, but the neighborhood doesn't seem to have a problem with it.
Right.
And, and that way then, then you can have one code enforcement officer that would go around to those issues that are, that are actually perceived problems, like, for instance, when you're going door-to-door and people are saying, hey, how about this, that sounds like a complaint, you know?
Well, I read them all down.
Yeah, but, but that's, but that's, that's, uh, that, that's you going under door and you're getting people telling you, yeah, this is a, these are the problems you have, now you know where are those problems? It's, but if people don't have a, really have a problem with it, you know, neighborhood, the, the city's never good, the city wouldn't know about it, but.
So, so what happens when our main street commerce has blighted properties, of which we've been dealing with one for a long time? But right next to it is another one, and we haven't even started to deal with that. As a council, can we be the more proactive ones? Because it is on our commercial street.
Well, I mean.
It's for the face of the town.
The, the issue with the property you're talking about, um, was a hazard, considered to be a hazardous building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that, when, you know, that, that, I don't know, I don't, I can't tell you how that started, cause that was before my time. But, you know, typ, typically with the hazardous buildings, it's, there's knowledge of the city that there's structural issues. They get in there, do an investigation, find out that it's a hazardous building, and then they have to, I mean, cause it's a danger once they handle this building, as opposed to just dilapidation or other things, but, um, you know, this may be another discussion for, but, it may, this may be a wider discussion for like a, a workshop, workshop, work session, um, this is, that's the purpose for it, to have these kind of more frank discussions.
Can I pipe up really quick?
Yeah.
I think, like, what I keep hearing too is, like, we need to add, you know, under seven A, like maybe after blight, like we should add, like evaluate and consider resources too. Because we'll say we want to do something about it, but like figure out how, how much is it gonna cost? What are we, who's gonna do it? You know, like I would love for, we keep mentioning Andy, apologies to Andy, but like he works Monday through Friday, like he's not gonna be at the boat ramp Saturday and Sunday, you know, it's like, that's not, that's just not gonna be it, so how do we get to where we want to be? And that, that's just one problem, like with blight, there's something else, and it's like if we have, you know, we kind of have like that decision tree of, well, if this happens, we do this, after the second notice, we do this, but like, what are the resources to get the problem solved? So it kind of goes back to budget too, but I don't know, I feel like that would be a workshop topic.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and also remember too, that, 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 the code enforcement part of it, that if it actually gets to a level where there, there's non-compliance, then there's legal fees involved too, whether it's gonna be my legal fees or, or Potts', you know, criminal legal fees, there's still, you know, fees involved, I don't, and I don't know what he charges and how, how that works out. But I know what I charge, and so that's something to keep in mind too. And, but I said, all these, you know, may be better for, for a work session and where I can maybe come a little bit more prepared too.
Okay. I'll just add, do workshop at the end here.
Also with code, this is sort of an aside, cause I've gotten a couple of calls, um, there is rumor around Mound that there is a building on Commerce near Gillespie that people are going to create a marijuana shop. Now, we, I know that at one point, we said that there's not really anything for us to do in terms of the marijuana loss, can we?
So.
But it is close to a perk.
Yeah, I know, it is close to a perk, yeah.
So as of right now, there, the, the Office of Cannabis Management, which is gonna be licensing the dispensaries, um, well, they're charged under the statute with, with creating model ordinances. They, and these dispensaries cannot operate until they're licensed. There's expectation that the first licenses won't come out until sometime in twenty twenty-five. Meaning that the expectation is that we're gonna get model ordinances, hopefully. Um, at least through the Office of Cannabis Management or through the Minnesota Cities, we'll get some model ordinances that then we can take a look at for, um, putting together, cause that's, it, it'll probably include zoning, um, uh.
Hours.
Hours, you know, well, you know, whatever, whatever it is, but I don't know, we don't know what it's, what it's gonna look like, and then that'll help us provide. And I, I, the idea is that, once that comes out, then we can put that together. Now, the, this doesn't, this is still a separate regulation to the current, um, uh, low potency gummies.
Right.
Um, but we already have regulation in place, you know, for that, the licensing, and that licensing will stay in place and, and until it's preempted by the Office of Cannabis Management. So everything is stayed, the status quo stays the same until we can get those model ordinances, and then we'll put those in place. And maybe then there's a discussion, once, cause then we'll have an idea of what's expected and what we can actually do. Okay, so, that, again, there's, they cannot, there is no, there are no dispensaries in Minnesota until there's an actual licensing from that Office of Cannabis Management, and those are not, I don't think they have anybody ahead of, I don't think they even have a department head yet.
No.
They did, they did, for a day.
Who didn't know?
Yeah, so, but hopefully, hopefully there, there's, the staff members are working on putting those together, I don't have any updates on it, I haven't heard.
But like, we don't even need to worry about that yet, it's not.
No, I would, yeah, I would say that I will, at the end of this quarter, I'll, I'll just check in, into it and see where it's, cause they're not the only city that is waiting, every other city is kind of waiting right now for it. So, believe me, it's on my mind.
I'm sure it's on everybody's.
Yeah.
With regard to that building, I'm sure all of us get asks once a week on when that's gonna get rolling. I've talked to Sarah, and, you know, everything's kind of gone through the planning commission, so it's good to go. I haven't talked to Jesse about it, but I did talk to Eric before he left, and he said that building is still waiting on some building permits. But it would be nice to find out when that building plans on getting going, cause it is kind of an eyesore.
Well, when they came to us, they said this is, you know, it's a private deal, they were gonna go quick through it.
Yes, yes.
Jesse, can you reach out to her and maybe give us an update or?
Yes, I might grab you afterwards here and.
Yeah, I can give you her contact. I mean, I can call her too, but. I haven't talked to her in a while.
I see her over there once in a while, and she's usually chatting with somebody, but it, it doesn't look like it's the person that's gonna be getting the job done, so.
Yeah, I know.
There haven't been any workers over there.
Well, it.
No, there haven't.
We're not, yeah. Well, we'll get an update on it. Uh, okay, let's move on to number eight, Mound Citizen of the Year. More friendly topics. So, I guess what I would say for purposes of, you know, giving you guys direction for this, would be, I, on A, I said announcing the main newsletter, so this probably is a pretty simple deal, but what I'm thinking is, again, is we announce, hey, you know, the council wants to do this, and then we throw it on Facebook and blah, blah, you know, and then.
I, I really think that this is a, a, more of a P R piece for us as council. And I think that we should take the responsibility of creating the criteria and figure out the, instead of giving it to staff, cause we're giving the staff a lot of, you know, we want, we want to use their expertise for what they are great at, and Citizen of the Year is, is our deal, we, we need to take that job.
I did just read, um, and I, I can't remember what city, but they just happened to have one, and it was interesting looking at their criteria of how people were able to vote on.
Yeah.
And, and I think that if we don't do that, people are, we need to confine this a little bit to help people understand what this person is. So I agree that we should be writing that criteria, and also.
It's us, I don't think we should be delegating it to the staff.
So I guess.
There has to be a way also, um, for this person.
They'll understand, really, putting it on the webpage and the Facebook.
So, like I said, announcing man newsletter. Um, what I would like to have you guys do though, is look at other cities, again, instead of us.
Don't, don't, no, we should do that. We should do that as council members.
Okay, you wanna do it?
I think that, no, I, it's not my.
It was my idea.
But I, I think, I think it's our job.
List of criteria that if you guys want to vote on.
Yeah, I mean.
From four other cities.
Yeah, see, she's already done the research.
All right, well.
I just don't think we should put it on the staff.
But the, but, one thing we will have to think about with regards to the staff. But the, but, one thing we will have to think about with regards to the staff is, how is this going to get turned in? I mean, at this point, we don't have a gathering, we don't have an email list at this point. So how are people going to be turning this information into the city? That's what we have to work with, probably with Maggie, um, how, how will this be, happen?
I'd say probably we'd have to name drop you and say, here, you know, email your submission to her, all it needs to re, you know, B is the name, Y, you know, whatever, right? And again, I can work through whatever the qualifications are. I want to keep this kind of broad, that obviously if it's inappropriate, no, but, and then we're gonna take as a council and kind of look at all the different submissions, and then, so again, my, I can come up with whatever and then bring it back to you guys, and then, you know, see how.
The biggest cities, and they probably have files of all kinds of cities that have done this.
That's what I wanted to look at, because they have access to all the, all, uh.
We can have access to, yeah.
Okay, well.
I think, I think sometimes making it too broad is, is hard for people. I think when you add a little bit of criteria, that'll help people go, oh, I, I know exactly who this person is. Um, just by adding five little notes on how you might want to think about choosing this person. They can use it as sort of a guideline.
Okay, any other thoughts on that? All right, so, let's see, my goal is to get it out in May, so that they have, you know, everybody has plenty of time to get a submission in and whatever. So over the next couple of months, we'll try to figure out what this looks like, and then bring it back to you guys, and then you can tell us if that works out for you guys too. All right, so I'll move on, again, that number nine, tree lighting, walk-through light display, i- i- you know, in the new park, which hopefully will be done by then. Um, surf side as a backup, work with WCC, volunteer city coordinate, uh, voting for best light display. So, Councilor Maggie, I know you kind of seemed interested in something like this.
Yeah, I said.
Do you want to kind of take?
I, I said that.
Okay, that's what I thought.
You asked me to, and I said yes.
Okay, so we'll, so you'll work on that?
So I'll do the walk-through light display and take care of how we'll coordinate this vote for the best light display in Mound.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Cool, well, we'll put, so we'll do that. And then, again, number ten, our, our goal, again, what we're doing here is we're recapping kind of what we talked about in our workshop, but, uh, number ten, customer service to residents. Uh, we're talking about that shield at the front desk, not inviting, uh, you can see reflection from the street, uh, email signatures. Um, I actually just noticed that today when I was emailing back and forth to a few guys, and I'm like, huh, what's their phone number? And it doesn't have it on the bottom, so I'm like, ah, crap, you know, then I had to go find it. It's like, again, I, it's a pet peeve of mine, I don't want to micromanage you guys, but again, I think it's a good look for the city.
It's a pet peeve of mine too, and it's pretty basic to just hammer out in like a week.
And I think everybody should look the same, it should be, you know, in my opinion, the same font, and look professional and the same thing, but whatever. You guys do what you want.
I don't really know if ten A should be like on a, uh, on this list for us, I mean, it's, it's up to them. I mean, like, we, it, whether it's, it's not like a COVID shield, it's just like a, I mean, where I work, we have a glass one, and it's like always up, or like the DMV.
The whole reason why they put it up was.
For COVID. I know, I know, I'm just saying if they, they want it up, and it's like a permanent thing, like, I think the fire department has.
Well, they got a whole glass thing.
Yeah.
That's a whole different thing.
I'm just saying, I don't know if it should be like.
Mayor Holt is suggesting is that it's, it's so unwelcoming, and, you know, ninety percent of them have been removed from public places.
Actually, I just got a notice from a doctor, and they're putting them back up in the hospitals again.
I don't have a.
They're starting to take them back down.
Problem with it one way or the other.
Children's got theirs off.
I'm just saying, I don't know if it's like a discussion item for us to.
Like a goal for the year. Okay, well, let's take it off, but again, you know what I think.
It's up to them.
But, but that, that includes the liquor store too. They still have all that up at the liquor store.
I, I just, yeah, it's, my problem is when I come in there, and again, all I can see is the car is going back and forth when I'm talking to someone, and it's so distracting. And I don't think, you know, if I'm a resident, I'm coming into our city hall, and I think we should be able to say some of this out loud. I think it's very uninviting to have a big thing blocking everybody. If you're the fire department, that's a permanent structure, I get it, but ours is not, and it, anyway, I'll move on. Uh, again, number, uh, B, so let's, we're gonna kind of remove that, but, uh, ten A, email signatures, again, just my, the whole point of this customer service. We want to make sure that people feel that we're actually giving them service because they're the ones paying for us. Uh, B, customer service, again, just big picture, we want to be serving our residents. Uh, eleven, state of the water update, speaking of, someone in our, uh, audience here, uh, you've done it for, I think, the last three years. So we'll just ask you to do it again sometime, I think we said March-ish, March, April, something like that, just the state of the water, you know, what are we doing? You know, some of it's just, this is where we're at, you know, this is what we're doing right now, and this is kind of where we're at, and, you know. Um, again, I think maybe I'll kind of take off, like, B, you know, after the ten millions release, again, let's just maybe take that off. But again, March of twenty twenty-four, question mark, somewhere in there, maybe. Uh, and again, I think we should do it yearly, is just, again, that doesn't really affect this year, because we're already talking about this year. Um, and then again, should be in every, you know, newsletter, you know, what are, what's our progress, you know, what are we doing? Again, I think every quarter, and I've actually just, Eric's going away party, um, I'm like, really, everybody's like, well, what's going on? What's going, and I'm like, we, we need to have this, you know, and every, everybody should know what's going on, if they at least make a little bit of attempt to find it out. And we gotta kind of push it on people so they can easily find it. I know we have the, the link on our website, which is good, but again, we gotta update that, you know, new date on there, hey, this is what we're doing. Uh, number twelve, uh, you know, we're open for business, uh, we just lifted our moratorium on, um, multifamily. So again, if anybody wants to come forward, um, just big picture. Uh, number thirteen, again, I don't know if you guys like this idea or not, or if you want to ditch it, but, um, if we wanted to look into, you know, if neighbors wanted to, you know, look into painting their, you know, little duck or whatever they have, little green thing on their stormwater, um, you know, member where a lake community, everything goes on a lake eventually. You know, people know that, but they don't know it sometimes.
A good time to probably promote that, and, and, I know they did this in Minneapolis, a national night out, whatever the unity night, the changing. Neighbors that are out there together with their kids, people are really into, you know, the neighborhood thing, that could be an opportunity to have the stencils. Give them to whoever's organizing the party. They could do the, the, the drains around wherever their party is, especially those that have them in their parks, and they could get the drains by their parks. And that's an easy way to deliver that to residents to do.
Also, um, at that stormwater, or at that rain barrel event, that would be a good spot to promote it to.
So is this something that we want staff to look into, you know, if they have grants or they have programs like this that we don't have to create on our own? Maybe there's something out there that we can piggyback off and just, they can come back and say, well, this is kind of what it looks like, and then it's, you know, billion dollars, I'll forget about it. Or, you know, it's pretty reasonable, and they have some grand dollars to get this done, or, you know, whatever, so. I know I've seen it somewhere.
Well, when people are registering their parties, they call the police or the fire department, which, who is it that they register their parties?
The city has a list somewhere, I don't know who they're calling.
Yeah, but do they call the city to register their parties? Or do they, I thought they just call the police.
Oh, like national night out.
For national night out.
I'm not sure.
I think it depends on the city, like, smaller, the smaller cities I've worked for, they've contacted the city, and then the city kind of coordinated with police and fire to be there, but I'm not.
So let me jump in, so we, we did get a list, and so I, I ran, I rode around with the, well, both, but I ran in, in, in the police car with an officer. And, and the two cadets in the back, it was pretty fun. Um, and they had a list, and they said, okay, well, we're going to these, so I was like, oh, I thought we were going all of them, and they're like, no, you're, we're going to like four. And I'm like, there's like thirty or twenty, you know, whatever. Now, again, if we wanted to do, we're like, we were kind of like helping or announcing or whatever, like, again, I only went to like four places out of all of them, so I think it's really just, you know, me and then the fire department, the police department, so either us or someone's gotta go, you know, ride around.
To them, I used to go, I used to try and hit all of them, but, um.
So that's the place that we want to introduce this?
Right.
I'm open, but I'm only hitting four, you're gonna hit four, you're gonna hit four, you know, we're gonna have to actually.
Yeah, we could divide it up between council members.
Yeah, so again, well, let's let them come back and see if there's anything there. I don't, I wouldn't, this shouldn't be like the highest priority, obviously, but, you know, see what you can find over time. Um, and then again, yeah, I know that August is national night out, so. Uh, Spirit of Lakes, uh, tent at the event, again, like we did last year, I think that went pretty good, uh, kind of split in time, uh, the parade, um, again, potentially all, all walking together. Uh, again, I think to be determined on that. Uh, and then, you know, is it, you know, we're paying obviously a lot for, uh, security and, you know, public works.
Was that verified that it is thirty thousand?
That's the number I was told last year too. Yeah, um, me personally, what I think is, it's a public event, it's our, it's our big public event, and I'm comfortable with it. Um. Again, do we want to make more contributions like we did last year, maybe not, but I like the tent, you know, like, you know, maybe we should pay for that, I guess, but.
We did.
You did, you did.
Well, I mean, our company did, but I mean, it's a donation.
Right.
To it, and so anybody can do that.
Right, right, so, I don't know, I guess I personally would just take the C off of there, unless you guys want to debate that more.
Is there a problem with that? Your company donated for our tent?
Uh, she did a.
No, we made a donation to the Spirit of Lakes for our company.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then.
They let the city.
And then for that, it was kind of a donation for our city space, but our company got acknowledged, so.
Okay, so again, I'd say take that off unless you guys want to talk about that more.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then with our, you know, police department, uh, someone mentioned like mutual aid calls and Minatrista, and again, we, we're on the police commission, so I don't know if we want to handle this kind of through that, or if you want to have a workshop.
I thought the question was, we were gonna look at, um, evaluating whether we renew our contract.
With our con, that's the next, yeah, yeah, is, is there, so what was the issue with the mutual aid calls?
Um, this is me personally, this is, this would be a huge project to get our own police department back, or, you know, because I talked to, to our former, uh, police chief about this and what transpired, and what was going on there, and the attendance at the council meetings in, when, when, uh, we were eliminating our own police department at that time, and the controversy around that. This would be a big step, we don't have the equipment anymore to bring it back, we would have to buy stuff. Uh, Minatrista is close to us, I, I know in the past, uh, there was some language in a meeting about going, merging our department with Minatrista, but it just didn't go anywhere, and, uh, this would be, I just want to make sure, because Minatrista has come through our town. I feel we're closer to Minatrista Police than we are to Orno Police, and I think it would be a better fit, me personally, but, uh, this would be a huge project to get our, uh, to get it back. You know, if we worked with, if Minatrista was even open to it, um, we could go there, would, are we, would we do it fifty fifty? You know, there's all kinds of questions about this. Um, I would like to see, I believe our contract expires at the end of twenty-five, and frankly, it would take us about that long to figure this out if we were serious about, uh, not renewing our contract with Orno. But, um, I did get a list of the mutual aid calls, because now if Orno can't come, you know, and because they're busy on the other end of town, or something else is going on, I, I just, I mean, my personal opinion is they have to call in Min, well, they do, they call Minatrista in to come and help out, so.
Are, are you feeling that, are you saying that Minatrista, um, the number of mutual calls, mutual aid calls is high?
I, I, I'm gonna say, uh, my own personal experience, um, Minatrista responds, I, 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 and I've, I've had some discussions with a police chief, um, with.
Cooperating.
Forniac, yeah, and then a couple of the Mound cops that are now on Orno, because they merged. I, I just think it, maybe we should look at this, I, and see, but you, would it take a lot of work to get, get it? Oh, yeah, it's gonna be a lot of work, is it gonna be a lot of money? Yeah, but we already are spending, um, two million dollars.
Yeah.
And we have an automatic, uh, increase, I believe, Mayor Holt, correct me, is it three percent each year? That they automatically just boost it up? I mean, that is a lot of money. For the contract.
It's gonna come up again.
Right.
I can give you a little bit of update on that, I think, um, in the contract, it's up to five percent. That's what the agreement is, it does not always mean that it is, so this year it was one percent for twenty twenty-four. So I, it's, it's an up to five percent, not, not automatically five percent, but it's, I just wanted to clarify it.
Hmm.
And does that go through negotiations with the unions, as far as how much they can go up?
Well, it's Orno's department, so they negotiate with their unions, then we negotiate our contract with the city, so.
Fine, but.
I think this should have been part of our financial work that we're doing on all of our fees and stuff. That's where this, this big of a cost issue needs to go, um.
But we don't know what the cost is.
See, we don't know.
Well, that's why, that's why you have the consultants we're having, we're, we're looking at all these things to cut costs and not increase levies, and then we're talking about, now we're gonna do the police department. Well, that's, that's part of this, of our, our budget, that's, that's a budget item.
Yeah.
And it should be reflected in the work we're doing on looking at how to generate revenues and cut back, you know, and things like that. So I think that that's where this work, I'm, you know, I'm in favor of looking at it, but let's do it in the right place with the right set of consultants who are working with us on this. And I guess the question is, are we looking at, do you want to look at re-establishing a mound police force? Or do you want to look at potential of other contract police, you know, like what we have with Orno? Evaluating if we stay with Orno, or should we look at someone else to do it with? I think those are two separate pieces.
Me personally, I think bringing it in-house is probably, again, I don't know, but it's probably gonna be way too expensive. I think looking at other options is a, I think, a job of ours that we should do, when our contract comes up, you gotta look at other contracts. There might not be other contracts out there that people want to contract with us. Um, and we said this in the workshop, I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't really have any forums with anything. I mean, I, I've been very happy with Orno Police overall, me personally, so, um, I think they do a great job. Our contract's coming up, me and the budget committee, plus on the, actually, the, I'm on the fire committee as well, or, sorry, police committee. Um, I think it's our job as people that sit up here, that we need to look at our contract. Maybe we just renew it and everything's great, maybe not, maybe we, maybe there's someone else that wants to.
And the question is, is there someone else?
There might, and that's the thing, it might be one phone call, and it, this is a dead deal, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's where I'd be at, I guess, with that. So I don't know if we need to.
I was just, because I had asked this before, um, that, uh, it, for the election coming up in November, I had asked the previous people to put it on as a referen, uh, put it on and ask our constituents, are your, are you interested in trying to get our own police department back? Uh, are you happy with what we're doing right now? You know, things like that, and if, if our constituents feel, it's perfect, we're happy, we, we don't have an issue, don't rock the boat, let's just. And if, if our constituents feel, it's perfect, we're happy, we, we don't have an issue, don't rock the boat, let's just, just go forward.
But we can't put, put that in the ballot till we have all the numbers crunched.
Absolutely.
To help them understand what they're voting for.
So we would say, you know, if you want your own police department free, merge with somebody else. I don't know, I just want the best police protection. Uh, for our constituents and uh, that's just what I'm not saying. Orno's not there. I'm just thinking that something else we need to look at, but that's just me. And I'm u- I was used to the old police department, um, before uh, it got tossed out, so.
Well, it was a council, just like we are a council.
Oh, yeah.
They tossed it out.
Oh, yeah.
If, if you want to raise this issue, then we need to figure out the path to look at it.
So, is this something you want to make a phone call, or?
I've been making phone calls, so.
Is it more appropriate for him or I, or? How do you think we should tackle this?
What's the phone call?
Well, for one thing, we gotta find if there's another person in the area that would want to do a contract with us. That's one number one.
I think we can leave fifteen as it is, like the way A, B, and C are worded, like we're gonna look at all of our options anyway if the contract is coming. You know.
Have you talked to Minatrista Police?
No, not the police. No, no, I've talked to some people there, I've talked, talked to the former police chief. And he explained to me what went on during that time.
And that was Jim Kurt?
Yes, and uh, just to refresh my memory, what was going on there, so, yeah. I, I, I just feel Minatrista, I don't even know, Minatrista turned us down before, might have been a per- for whatever reason. But um, but, you know, I'm only one of us and if we're, if this council is happy with, with the current situation. Then maybe just isn't something we want to look into.
Well, I think from a cost perspective, I agree that we owe it to our residents to at least look at. Another community, if their, if their police is willing to service our community, we should at least look at the cost so we can do some comparison.
I guess when we look at, like if we're just gonna look at fifteen, like I'm interested in looking at partnering or renewing with Orno or Minatrista. But I'm not interested in looking into our own, like we did, it's like so much money. And like the ongoing budget implications, but I think we can definitely serve mound the right way with Orno or Minatrista. But I don't think that changes any of the bullet points on here, you know, looking into everything.
Looking into their contract and, okay. All right, and then C, uh, social worker homeless problem, I guess obviously that goes with big picture, um, the police department.
Well, of course, it's bigger than that. I talked to, actually, one of the candidates running for the sixth district. Of which half a mound is in, with Hennepin County. There are no shelters in the sixth district. So even, and, and I've also been told that some of the homeless people that are here are actually mound residents. Who've had issues within their families and so, um, you know, um. It's, it's kind of a dilemma of, we need to get some service people out to work with them, but there's no place within our district. For them to go. There's no shelter.
So, I mean, obvi- obviously this is on, the thing that we talk about all the time, when, in our meetings, we discuss it. You know, we have our uh, police, you know, showing up all, I mean, it seems like every time they're saying something about it. So, I don't know if there's an action item or we just keep talking about it, or making sure that obviously they know that it's important to us?
Well, it's, it's a good time for us to really drill the people running for that district, um, our Hennepin County representatives. We have to, and say, we really need something to be addressed. Because it's, it's, it's a service that the county would provide.
And I don't know exactly what the rules are, um, and it, it's probably because of my position of where I live. That I see a lot of activity uh, on the trail there and across on the vacant land that's across over towards Arleth Lake. Kathy and I were actually investigated, we went down to the compound or the group that was down. On the northwest corner of Lake Langdon.
Well, we got a call from a resident.
Yeah, I met council down there, that was Met Council property and so, but the issue seems. I, I don't know if it's private property and the property owner doesn't care if somebody's camping, you know, on their property. I guess there's really nothing we can do. I mean, it just, and I know this police officer I talked to, when I got, when I get, anyway, the call I got. And I checked it out and I waited for the police officer to show and he, and he explained to me. You know, we can ask him to go down and we get him, put him in a shelter and he, and he said, I'm, I'm familiar with this person. Uh, that's what the police officer talk- that keeps coming back, coming back and, you know. I, 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 it was by the school, it was school going on, the kids were in the parking lot. I'm not saying this person necessarily was. Uh, gonna cause any harm, obviously not, but I, 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 I don't know. I, I just think we should keep an eye on it. That's what I think.
This is a perfect time in election season because every small city is just getting pummeled, you know, because of decisions from. The government, you know, look at our food shelf, what's happening.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just chaos. And, and these are all results from government.
Mandates.
Mandates that, that we're dealing with and, and, you know, as Minneapolis has overwhelmed, you know, the social services keeps pushing them all out.
They're not pushing out. We, we need to not make those statements. They're not pushing them out to here. People are finding their way here, but it's not that they're, they're pushing, because they, they do have housing in the city where they can place them. And they do try to, you know, they go through the encampments and they try.
I think they're talking about the food shelf for food.
Okay, the food shelf.
Homeless people.
Yeah.
Okay.
This was going on, the food shelf.
And I heard that secondhand from someone else, and again, I'm not involved in the food shelf, but I know people that volunteer there. And they kind of said the same thing that, people, there's like, I think the max is nine that they'll give to, nine people, so they'll show up with like nine.
But, there's a whole list of other issues, but, but that is related to the homeless.
Yeah.
Because social services, and I've talked to a couple of them regarding the food shelf, you know, they are trying to find people housing.
Yeah.
And they're, and, and these poor people, because we've taken in all these people from other countries, what have you, they can't get work.
Yeah.
So, they have nowhere to live. I mean, so we do need to, to be involved with, with how we vote. To make sure there is some oversight on what the cities are having to deal with from, from policies and regulations, so.
So, is it my responsibility when I get calls from the, our constituents about people camping and, I'm gonna call it camping. Out in the woods and do I, as a council member, is it my obligation to call the police? Or do I just leave them alone? Do I leave the homeless people alone?
When I, that deal that was on the Met Council property there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I'm not saying it's because of me, but that incident was there, right? The policeman came over and said, hey, you need to leave. They said, well, no, we're, you know, whatever, and they didn't.
No.
Uh, I got an email from someone, or no, I think I heard it through, secondhand through my connections. And they're like, yeah, someone's, you know, camping out over there and they felt, you know, safety for their, the people up the hill there and the development there. Not that, you know, you never know, but um, so I emailed uh, the chief and within an hour or two. You know, I mean, he was responding right away and he said, hey, we're working on it, we're doing this, we're doing that. We have to get permission from Met Council to be able to get them off the property because it's not yours, it's not the city's property and it's not an individual. So we gotta find out who that person was to really, once they did that, they were gone. I mean, they were gone within a few hours after I got involved. You can get involved, you can get involved. If you get an email, then please reach out to the police or let him do it. Um, and then he can stay on top of it too, but I can't remember if that was a weekend or what, what the deal was.
It was a weekend, we were there on a Saturday.
Yeah, so, I, I can look at my old emails, but again, once, once they got involved and once they got a hold of that right person. And I, so if someone's hanging out in your backyard, yeah, you have all rights to tell them to leave or get the police involved, but. Or if they're at our city park, again, that's our park, you know, we have, but if it's that some, someone wants them in the backyard and they want to camp out. It's no different than me and you camping out in the backyard, so.
Right.
That's what I hear from, from the chief, so.
By the way, our friend that was here talking about Dutch Lake and the garbage and stuff like that, I just want to let you know. My two granddaughters and I, on that trail, that, that Dakota Trail there, they need to put garbage cans there. County needs to be responsible because we go down, that's my two little granddaughters and myself with our bags and gloves. And we police that trail with the caribou cups and everything else that's on there, so there's a lot of areas. Maybe Dutch Lake needs a garbage can there and all that, maybe.
Well, the concern was if you put one there, that people would put other things.
Well, there used to be one there and they removed it because they found dead bodies, I mean, I'm, they found really strange things.
Oh, is that why they?
Yeah, that's what they.
Well, dead bodies as in deer.
As, as animals.
Not a girl body, like a carcass, yeah.
So what do you think about number sixteen?
Okay, so let's move on.
Everything else you can imagine, people driving back downtown.
Okay.
All right, so number sixteen.
Wear gloves.
Contributions to, city contributions to organizations, again, I don't know how often this happens, but I think. What was the reason why we put this on here?
Um, well, let's go back to the Eli Hart Group, that was something different, but I think we had two groups coming up. And the, uh, it had to do with the water and the rain garden and, and they, and they were doing the work and I, and the second time. There was another group that came up and I don't know, we, I, where do, what do we do if we had a policy?
I remember what it was. You were saying like, I mean, and rightfully so, like we should have a policy so we have like a guideline.
Yeah, and maybe we don't.
So it's not an expectation.
Yeah.
We could probably handle that one pretty.
And what I said is on boards I've been on, we have a set amount, like we set aside twenty-five thousand dollars. And we say, you know, throughout the year, if groups come to us, out of that money we can allocate. Now, that's a little different because remember there's, there's like Gillespie who used to, we used to give them actually a grant every year, I think.
We were giving them sixty thousand dollars a year and then.
For ten years or something.
Yeah, and then they, the city cut it off, yeah.
And then we cut it off and every year they come back and still ask, you know, can the city give them? So that, that's a even maybe different category. Uh, and then there's the thing like, we waive the fees on the park.
Yeah, or like if they have an event or something.
Eighty events, and so the, again, that's another gift.
I think L M, L M C could probably help us out with that.
Yeah.
Sixteen.
So maybe we need to think about all those things so that we spell them out. There's, there's when we waive fees. And then there's, you know, are we, or, or maybe we don't want to give cash contributions, which is fine.
Well, like that rain garden stuff we did in kind, where we had our uh, public works people went, go over there and stuff like that, anyway. I, I'm just saying, if we're trying to look at our budget for next year, um, I just think we, you know, should be prudent with our taxpayers' money.
Okay.
And if you need to cross it off, we were just kind of, we were just kind of throwing things out there at our meeting, so.
It was a workshop, yeah. No, I think we'll leave it and. Again, have the staff look into, you know, maybe, again, what do, what do other cities do? Is there a guideline? Maybe just come up with some.
Maybe is that in our budget right now?
Probably not.
No, I think it's just up to us what we want to do.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Number seventeen, statutory A versus B. I know we've, I, I know you and I personally talked about this a while back. And probably, you probably talked to a few other people, but um, you know, have your opinion is one. Number two, costs, and why even, what, why are we even looking at this? What's the point of it?
Well, we want to know if there's any benefits.
That, that's my point.
And part of it is, can we find?
Code enforcement.
A pros and cons list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, A, have your opinion, B, costs, C, why would we do it or not?
What are the benefits? Or are, maybe there are.
Is that something that we should punt to him then, and then?
I know the League of Cities has a list of pros and cons and I have it in my paper, stat paper, but, yeah.
It, it's kind of hard to understand, at least maybe I'm just an idiot.
No, I definitely want his opinion.
I think Scott, breaking it down and, and saying, here are the pros, you don't have any pros, you know, doing this, or here are the cons. Hearing it from you would just make it easy. It's really hard to get through that L M, League of Cities thing.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's different as a, I look at it as different as, um, not pros and cons, but what does it mean to be a statutory A city? What does it mean to be statutory B city? Um, and if you did want to switch, what is the process involved?
And the cost.
And I, I mean, the cost was, that's not my, that my bailiwick is, is not the cost, you know. But I can tell you the, the parameters of saying, here's, here's, you know, look at the statute, this is what an A does, this is what a B does. And I can look to see if there's any secondary materials on benefits of both, because that's maybe the pros and cons you're looking for. And then the process of saying, okay, if you did want to switch, here are all the steps you have to take in order to do it. I, I, I have, I had, I had done some preliminary research on it, but then that kind of went to the wayside. Other, other issues came up, so is that something you want me to, to, is that something that you want me to pursue?
I like a bailiwick, yeah, it's perfect.
Or, you know, maybe Jesse, you, you came from a statutory A city, didn't you? Maybe you know enough to be able to break it down for us, but it would be just nice in layman terms for us to hear, here's a couple bullet points. Here's a couple bullet points, you know, what do you think?
Yeah, so you can just do what you said, A versus B, why, pros and cons kind of thing, what's the process? I know you can't do costs, but is it a majority vote for, is it all five of us, is it, you know, on the election thing?
Million dollars versus five thousand dollars would be nice, just have a rough idea.
I think you'd have an idea once I tell you the process for changing it. I think you'll have an idea where the cost is, is it something that's gonna be voted or initiated? Or is it something that is going to be, you know, something that you just do here? I don't recall offhand, so I'm not gonna make any opinion on that.
Okay.
And I've read some old articles in, I think it was the Historical Society, um, and they referenced a few times the, the B. And they were really mad when they moved from, was A to B and because they didn't have certain members of the council were in control. High level, that's what the article said, if I remember right. It's a long time, but.
I mean, there, there's also a look at the factor that the city is, the city's structure currently staffing and everything else is set up. As a B and I don't know what that means, but it is, it is what it is.
So it'd be a whole thing, whole architecture, I mean, everything would be different.
Structure change.
Well, anyway, can you just look into it, just.
Well, we talked about it, this is going on second year.
Yeah.
Talked about it, so it'd be nice to be able to just check it out.
It's longer than that.
Yeah, probably, yeah, as long as I can.
If it would make us, yeah, maybe it's not worth it.
Yeah, I know.
Number eighteen, we just did, so our council meetings at six instead of seven, again, I put a note, we were, we were just motioning the staff to do that, so. Again, beyond that, do you guys have any other?
Well, we got this, this petition, so what are we gonna do with this?
I, that was on my list, so I just gave it to Jesse and also Brian, uh, was here too. Remember last year we came up with a, you know, kind of a guideline for people that want to take out stop signs, put in stop signs, put in speed bumps? Remember we all did that?
What was that?
Stop sign.
Oh, oh, over there, yeah, I got it here.
Yeah, so I gave a copy.
We talked about it last year.
So I gave a copy that, you know, we have, you know, kind of a set guideline of what we're gonna do, so they're gonna put that into motion. And uh, for everybody that hears this, uh, we hear you, we saw the, the petition and.
Yeah.
Regarding the stop signs on Tuxedo and Brighton.
Yeah, we're gonna look, we're gonna look into it.
Policy, when someone gives us a petition, do we owe them at least a public hearing or a presentation of this?
You just need to follow up, I think, it depends on what it is, you know.
I gave my copy to him, but is there an address or a phone number to call? I gave my copy to him, but is there an address or a phone number to call?
Yeah, there is.
Her back.
Winter Road, July.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have Jesse be in contact with her. Hey, we got it, we're looking into it. We do have a process. And again, I just talked to Brian before the meeting and he is aware of it too. And remember, he helped us create the process of what we do and don't do in this scenario.
That was not a unanimous vote, by the way, that thing on Tux.
It was, was it three?
I voted, I voted against it. I lived there, I I know the danger of that stop sign. That's what I said.
And I will say on record, the reason why this came, I think it was Councilmember Velsor.
Yes.
And actually, I was told about it many times by a couple buddies that live in that area. And I never really said anything, there was only one or two people. And then when he brought it up, I kind of jumped on board with it. But and the people that are in that area have emailed me and contacted me and they're very happy with it, so.
That they don't want it?
That they want it. They're very happy and they're 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 saying my kids are very happy for it too. Because they can cross.
Really, contrary to what this is?
Absolutely contrary, 100% contrary. They're very happy that it's installed and that it's there.
Really?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Now, that's a couple people versus.
You know, it's interesting too, because, I I mean, I know Deb and she doesn't live right by the intersection. She clearly goes through there because she lives, you know, on that side of the island. So I think her position is as someone who drives that and travels that road. And I think the people who live real close to it have a little different perspective on it.
And the people that I'm talking to are within spitting distance of the stop sign. And they're very appreciative for them walking slash their kids and the area. I get it's a pain in the butt for everybody else that has to go back and forth. And when we first did it, I remember going over there and I saw people just went right through because they didn't even know it was there yet. And then we had the big orange signs put out and then hopefully they're stopping them. So there are, there is two sides to every story.
Of course.
Whether you get 100 votes or not, or 100 signs or not.
It's just like, there's a stop sign on Grand View, at Grand View, where the street is. And and that was put in because, you know, we had the kid who got hit with the car that came around the corner. And the kids are coming out of school and, you know, three years it hadn't been there. And I I have to train myself sometimes to remember, there's a new stop sign, you know, you got to stop now.
And we pull out of there, we drop one of our kids off at the elementary school.
Yeah, and you come out there.
Or sorry, the middle school. And we come right out there, so I'm very happy that they stopped there as a dad. So just remember, there's, there's always two sides to every story.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, we are looking into it. And Jesse, you can follow up with her that we did talk about it. And we're going to throw it through the process. Again, this is 2024, goals and priorities. So does anybody else have any other goals or priorities they want to talk about? We can always add later.
I would like to just, it can be discussed later about council member training, you know, and are we going to participate in another legislative day on the Hill? Since our water issue is our big issue, are we going to go with the league on that day? You know, it's an opportunity.
So I will say my two cents about that. And that's, I guess, going back to number one, the water funding part, I mean, your second question anyway. On my calendar, it's blocked off, so I won't be down there doing whatever I can. And then maybe we'll hang out.
Sure.
You want to come down too? But you're referring to March?
It's March. I, you know.
Some, some I can't, I don't know.
Yeah, it, the the league sent us emails about it.
Yeah, let me get it real fast. So in your, in your opinion, what what do you get out of that?
Well, I think, I think, you know, one is you get a better sense, since we are newbies to lobbying in the legislature, by going on that day, you also get the experience of hearing what other people are doing and how they're pursuing their their legislative agenda. So it's, you know, it's it's a day when the league is there. There's, 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 you know, the legislators are expecting you to be there. They're there to hear and listen what what you're doing. They will often, they'll have meetings where legislators will come in, committee chairs will come in and speak to the group so you can get a sense of who they are and what they are. So I think it's it's a learning and and a positive opportunity. I mean, Jesse, you participated, haven't you?
Yes, a couple different times.
March third is a Sunday, so I don't know when it is.
March eighth, maybe? I don't know, I thought it was like a Wednesday or Thursday, if I remember. Can you find the date and then let us know? And then Jesse, I'd imagine you want to come with us?
Of course.
Okay, all right, so we have three at least. If you guys want to come, you're welcome.
And Maggie's going to go.
And you can, yeah, whatever, y'all can. More the better, we need to tell them what we need.
So what is this, is this to, to once again, kind of do what was done before?
That wasn't like last year, no, this is just where they invite, you know, city managers and council people and and they invite them down. It's called Legislative Day on the Hill. It's like just a whole day that they kind of set aside.
Yeah.
They do a different speaking and presentations and stuff, so. Again, if you, if you're able to, he'll shoot us an email with, I can't remember the exact date.
It's not specifically about our water?
No, it's just big picture, but it's, you know, it's.
But they may have hearings that, it could be that the water bill comes up. Because they'll have hearings knowing that the cities are there to address different bills. So they will have, you know, opportunities where different cities can get test.
On the training side, you know, I know, well, I get the emails from the league and I know Eric previously would send them out to us. Is that enough or?
Well, I think so, but, you know, we're still a fairly, you know, we're a new council. So we have a lot to learn as we're paying our attorney to teach us on some of this and stuff. And and in the past, the staff always registered us. So are we still, are you guys still doing that for us?
So it's coming up in February.
You're referring to the league's newly elected and returning officials? Would you just like us to, I mean, are they think they're doing it remotely anymore?
I think they're going into Plymouth again.
The advanced one is at Plymouth, I think it's in two days.
Do you want to just shoot us those dates again? I don't know if everybody gets the league emails, so. Just shoot us the, I think there's a beginner and then and then advance. And then they have a couple of days in Plymouth.
Yes, so I think we're we're all out of the beginners now and everyone go to advance.
What, if, like, I went to the beginner one already, you went, so then you could do it again, or you go to the next person.
Because it is a good one to go to.
You know, it may be worthwhile when we go there afterwards, that if we have materials that you've provided, provided to me, I can take a look at it to see if there's maybe something I can supplement. Because I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to be repetitive. I mean, that's not going to be useful. But if there's something that maybe I could supplement, even in a memo or something like that, that if I take a look at it and say, well, you got, or the training is complete enough, that's not a problem. If there are questions that come out of it, then I'll know what you guys, you know, will do.
I promote, I looked at the dates a little bit and I didn't know if they were going to work for me personally. But I can double, I can double check them, but.
I think they're.
Was it Friday afternoon to Saturday, I think? And I can't remember if I had an issue with one of them.
It's Friday all day and then Saturday goes totally or something like that.
Okay, well, we'll look at them again.
The eighteenth and nineteenth, somewhere around there.
Okay, well, for 2024, anything else that we want to try to get done as a city or council? And then again, remember, this is, we can add to this or we can come up with different subjects over time. So we'll, we'll close that out then. Number nine, comments and reports, council member Pew.
Well, Saturday, Sunday was the fundraiser for Gillespie and the Phillips Town Hall group. And I was really happy because they came up and told me that when the Phillips group was here last time and I suggested they look at for environmental grants, they got one. They got one for $36,000. They paid for all of the the roof work and stuff. So so they're, they're moving right along. It looked like it was a good turnout. I was there, what, about 10:30 to 12:30. So there were a lot of people there and stuff, so I think, and they ran out of eggs, so I think they had a good fundraiser.
That's good, that's good.
Anything else?
No.
All right, council member Larson?
I don't have anything.
Council member McEnany?
Just a reminder that the Polar Plantes this weekend and our own staff has three or four people jumping. So congratulations and we can't wait to see you. It'll be, and and at the W C C meeting, they did mention that we've exceeded last year's enrollment, which is really great. Last year was big, this year, it's even bigger, so it'll be fun. It's going to be warm.
I know, I know.
Yeah?
What time are you jumping?
Oh, gosh, I don't know, I'm, we're teaming up with W C C's group, but I don't know if we know yet when we're jumping.
Does it start at noon?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were going to let us know by midweek if they're going to jump in or run in. Based on, because of the weather, it's been so warm. I think jumping would be better than running into the freezing cold.
And Megan was at the breakfast too, so staff was there representing.
So my son's jumping with the football team.
Oh, how fun.
He tried to get me and I'm like, my back, I'm like. Anything else?
No.
Okay, council member Castellano?
I don't have anything.
All right, and then I don't really have much either. Again, behind the scenes, we're, you know, I was working on certain things, but, yeah, I don't really have much either. Ten, information miscellaneous, you guys have any thing you want to say?
I have a couple things. I did, I had a meeting today with the library.
Oh, yeah.
And they are, they're going to be here at our February 13th meeting. They're ready to finish design and then get into, well, they're going to basically present to the council the initial plan and then do a public engagement in March. And their plan is to start construction by December, or, well, they're going to tear it down before then and then start building in December, so. They showed us some pictures.
They're going to construct through this summer?
It would be December 2024 through about spring of '26.
There was an article in the Lake last week that kind of explained all that too.
It's, it's really cool. But so they're going to come and they basically, they asked about when the council would want to see it versus when public engagement would happen. So I figured you'd probably want to know before any sort of public meetings were happening, so.
Cool.
They'll be here in February. We've been talking with our Tessa, they're still on track to do roughens this week and be done by August, so, or mid-August, which should help us out to get started on the park improvements, which should be going to the park committee, Parks and Open Space Committee on the eighth, which then we would come to the next, probably the the 28th council meeting, just because February 8th is the day of parks and is also the day of the pack that would have had to have been done. So if there's anything to come from that, we don't want to have to be scrambling. And we have a fire commission meeting this Thursday morning. I believe the mayor and Ms. Larson are on the committee, so I don't know if you're planning to attend at eight.
Yeah, I I go for as much as I can and then usually it stays on the end.
So Greg's all, Chief Peterson's all prepared. The, and then the Polar Plantes are meeting tomorrow on site at 10:00 a.m. to determine whether or not it's going to be a jump or a run, so. And that's it.
All right, well, thanks for all your emails that you're sending us.
Yes, yes.
Doing great, John.
Thank you. Fitting right in.
Taking on a huge additional to-do list.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I, you know.
Do you need to borrow more paper?
No, I'm trying to use less, actually.
And thank you, Maggie, as well.
Yes.
You're doing really good job.
Yes.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, all right, and then a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
All right, thank you.